I wonder if you can take a seat, if you can find one. There seems like there's a few vacancies still here. I don't think everybody has to stand. We're gonna start in just a couple seconds. Okay, I wonder if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Pancher.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fruen. Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We do have a quorum. We have public comment, and we have two people who have asked for public comment time, and that is a maximum up to three minutes with out of response by the council. And the first is Alton Franklin.
Good evening. Evening. My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. Several things on my mind tonight. It seems we're continuing on in an area that still causes me a fairly good degree of concern. I continue to see in the agenda where we're bypassing the bid process, no explanations. Occasionally, we'll get, well, this is the state schedule that we can buy from, and we leverage the power of the many. And that's all well and good, but I see other ones that just, really, I don't understand what the imperative is, that it has to go right now, that we can't establish an RFP process that isn't knee-jerk. It would give us the ability to make a more measured response, to come up with a better way and possibly more efficient way of doing things. I just have real issues with, I just don't want to see it tracked back into the way that it has been in the past, where we wait and wait and wait, and push off and push off and push off until such time as, oh, we need to do this right now, something goes in, and it's not in the best interest of the citizens of our fair city. On another matter, I congratulate Diana Hallman on her nomination by the mayor. I'm still a little bit quizzical. I've never seen Ms. Hallman. I hope she can find her way here. Simply put, I've invested a lot of time. I put a lot of thought and a lot of care into what I have brought to the council, the times I've come up here to public comment, and the times that I've done the one-on-one sessions on the sidebars that we've had. And I really don't understand how anybody could be more closely identified with a citizen of Ward Eight than myself, but I guess maybe that's why I'm not mayor. I really do believe that I will be running, by the way. I've got a press release that's gonna be coming out this Thursday, where I will be announcing my candidacy. I have not so much, I've never sought any type of political office for any reason of notoriety or any sense of, well, you know, I've done this, this will put me into a certain area in the social circles. I am who I am, and that is a person of service. I spent ten years in service to our country. I like to believe that the things that I do serve a lot of people on a daily basis with the job that I do. Above and beyond that, I'm a caring and concerned and engaged citizen. I don't believe that there's anybody who's come here very often that could point out in any respect. I may be sometimes a bit abrasive, where I feel it's warranted. Sometimes you gotta knock the crust off before you can get to the good stuff. All that being said, I, again, feel like we need to have a more measured view of what's going on, and we don't need to talk about what's not. We need to talk about what we're going to do to grow and to progress and to take care of the citizens of our fair city. And last point, both for the regular and consent agendas, I have not received any compensation in monetary or other means for what I have said or the way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, April Huber.
Sorry for my slowness, Mayor, but I've got braces on my knee, and the cane doesn't help.
That's quite all right. Thank you.
I'm following up, I think, Alton's on transparency. When you first took office, you were talking about transparency. Well, on the ninth of this month, or the twelfth of this month, I'm sorry, under Ju- Judge Foley, you finally dropped your, the city's argument against divulging documents and emails or undocumented. One wasn't allegedly. One was a very negative article in The Panograph, which was discussed. The other one was a private citizen who comments were made. And the third one was the very obvious end, Citywide 92.9 Flamingo campaign, which, again, was discussed in a negative light. You did drop the argument against obtaining those FOIA requests. A second FOIA request was filed this week on the meetings of the city council. The question is, since it is now a state law, that it is a felony to block FOIA requests, and the wording of that is documents, but I don't care how you cut it, a email is a document. And I'm wondering if the new FOIA request, that citizen will incur costs in fighting that, and will these new events change the transparency issues that seem to be becoming fairly rampant in your office?
Okay, just to make it clear for everybody, we don't make the common practice of responding, but the big picture I can tell you is, unless it's a personnel issue or something really sensitive, pretty much the media and everybody knows what's going on in City Hall. So, anyway, that's the only comment that I'll make. Thank you.
That's not the same thing as answering a FOIA request.
Well, FOIA requests, I'm not gonna get into a dialogue with you now, I'm sorry.
Right, I know.
But FOIA requests can have all kinds of repercussions, and there are lots of details that are associated with that, so I can't, I'm not gonna comment on that.
So you're not going to divulge the FOIA?
I don't even know specifically what you're talking about and all the details of what you just said, so I'm not, we're not gonna get into a public discussion here. Thank you.
No, I got the answer I was expecting.
Okay, okay. Good evening. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on. We have six A is appointments and recognition, and we have an appointment recommendation under Ward Eight Alderman, and we did have two candidates. And actually, we did have two candidates that certainly had very strong commitments to the community and I think to our city. There was no question about that. I did consult with the entire council, got feedback from the entire council. I did, as I did in the previous appointment in Ward Five, consulted the previous occupant, so I did consult with former Councilman Rob Tizini, as I did consult with former Councilwoman Jennifer McDade. They don't have a vote, but I think as a courtesy, it's important to hear what they have to say in making a decision. And the recommendation that I had submitted to the council was that of Diana Hallman, who is here, and if there is a motion to approve and second, then we can begin.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment.
Okay. Made by Scott Black, Alderman Scott Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Jim Fruen. Any discussion? All the women's turn.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight have absolutely no bearing on Diana whatsoever. I do plan to vote for her appointment, as is the mayor's pleasure, the mayor's request. However, I think it's worth a comment or two. This is extremely important. It may seem, you know, routine, minor, but it's extremely important in looking at the future of our city and the direction our city is going. And this appointment is extremely important in terms of the discussion on city council, the weight of, you know, varying opinions, and whether, in fact, we'll have, we'll actually have varying opinions on the city council, whether the citizens want that. Perhaps they don't. But that's what elections are about. I'm a big fan of elections versus frankly, appointments. Elections allow you, the people, to choose. Elections are about the consent of the governed, and you are the governed, and in my opinion, humble as it may be, you should select. That's why resignations from council for whatever reason to me are very disappointing, because someone is not, you know, essentially is not honoring their commitment for whatever reason, and it may be a very good reason. Still, it allows the mayor to appoint. Now, when the mayor appoints a member of city council, the advantage, of course, when it comes to elections for the incumbent is rather huge. All of the election specialists, I've heard 20 percent, I've heard a lot of percentages, but there's a very, very large advantage. So if the citizens of Bloomington are okay with that, so be it. I personally think it takes a lot of analysis to understand what a resignation from city council really means. Having said that, I am going to read a very short email I wrote to Mayor Renner. Again, this has no bearing whatsoever on Diana, whom I'm sure is very qualified and a very fine person. But here's what I wrote, and I'm very disappointed that I don't believe the citizens of Bloomington will get to know. Mayor Renner talked about input from Rob Tizini, or from Jennifer, whatever. The laws talks about advice and consent of the council. Now, that brings you in. We are here and are charged with bringing the citizens of Bloomington into the process, and I think that's critically important, and I think, in my opinion, every one of us should voice our own opinions and not just submit an anonymous secret, if you will, vote. I put mine out there, and I'm going to read it, and with that said, I am going to vote for this appointment. Dear Mayor Renner, this was sent on September 10th. In the interest of transparency, my email is completely available to forward or publish. I would assume all votes from city councils should be discoverable by FOIA. This is city business. If I'm mistaken, please inform me. I'm not sure other council members even sent FOIAs or emails. I have a feeling they didn't. I think our citizens deserve to know our thought process in a decision as important as this one, and I hope you agree. I would like to know what my fellow council members are thinking. This was sent to the mayor and the entire council. In closing, I vote for a citizen who has taken an extraordinary interest in our city and city government. He has spent literally hundreds of hours attending our meetings and speaking to us as frequently as possible, both formally and informally. He knows us, and he knows the issues, and has shown an extraordinary commitment to the improvement of the city of Bloomington. He is a gentleman in the truest sense of the word, a veteran of our country's armed services, a true patriot. His name is Alton Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin.
I'll just be real brief. Again, I wanna support what Judy said, and I agree with it. I've known Alton probably six or seven years now. I know him on a professional, a citywide and a personal level. He's very involved, and I don't know Diana, and I would think that someone as involved would have taken certainly a lot of consideration. I hope he did. And I encourage anyone that has the will and the energy that Alton has to be involved civically the way that he is. He's quite a leader, and I think that he has a future at some point here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, if there are no other further comments, if everyone will vote, a yes vote would be supporting the recommendation, and no vote would be in opposition. It's Armstrong. There we go, sorry. Okay. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. And then at this point, I guess we ask Diana Hallman, who's in the back, to come forward, to be sworn in, please.
Who knows? Okay.
We've got our millennial taking pictures.
You will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Diane Hallman.
I, Diana Hallman.
Having been appointed to the office.
Having been appointed to the office.
Alderman in Ward Eight.
Of Alderman in Ward Eight.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the county of McLean.
In the county of McLean.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman for Ward Eight. For the office.
For the office of Alderman of Ward Eight.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't help you hot a vote. No kidding. Yeah, okay. Next, we're gonna move on to our beautification awards, 2014 beautification awards. Excuse me, ma'am. Can I help you?
Yes, you can.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to have you removed if you don't sit down, because we need to move on with beautification awards. Public comment is out of time.
I'm not gonna sit down, but I do vote.
I know, understand, but we would have been, we would have been very happy to take your comment card in the appropriate time for public comment, ma'am.
But I do need to say what I have to say.
I'm sorry, but I can't take you, can't allow that, because I would have to allow everybody in Bloomington then the same thing. I'm sorry.
Listen to me, because we voted for you.
I appreciate that, ma'am, but we can't, I can't suspend the rules right now.
I have a lot of people that voted for you.
Thanks.
And I have to say.
Ma'am, if you'd wait, I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting.
No, we wanna talk with everybody.
Okay. No, no, you're not being arrested, ma'am. Sorry. Again, if we could, if we could move on to the beautification awards, 2014 beautification awards. Josh, could you come forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Hales, thank you very much for having the beautification committee here at the council meeting this evening. This is our annual beautification awards. We'll be presenting here tonight. It's very exciting. This is sort of our big night of the year to come before the council and to present these awards. You know, beautification really plays a large part in community and economic development as well as boosting city morale and also adding to the general enhancement of our neighborhoods. It's really an important thing, and we're just so pleased to be able to serve you as members of the beautification committee. This year, we had 94 nominations from across the entire city. From those 94 nominations, we chose 11 winners. There are seven residential winners that we'll showcase this evening and four non-residential winners. But before we get to that, I wanna take just a quick moment and recognize the members of the beautification committee, many of whom are here today. Beautification committee, if you would please stand up. On the beautification committee, we have Martha Burke, Patricia Martin, Patricia Moran, Marlene Gregor, Val Dumser, Andra Skell, Sue Floyd, Robin Vandermei, Amy Davis, and Erica Larkin. And I thank all of the committee members for their service to the city and to the committee. Well, first up to bat, Mayor Renner, if you wouldn't mind joining us down here, we'd love it if you could actually present the awards to the winners this year. First up to bat this evening are our residential award winners, as I mentioned before, and we have Marcia Hammerstrad, who is at 16 Fountain Lake Court on the eastern side of Bloomington. And you can see, looking at her home, she loves downtown. She has the sign right there in the front yard, but some lovely landscaping there by the garage as well as to the entrance of the drive. You can see some more flowers and a beautiful small tree planted there on the side. Again, a close-up of some of the plantings there on the side of the driveway. That's really just a lovely, lovely bush that's out there in front of the home, really adds to the character of the overall property. And then, I'm a big fan of this moose that she has in the front yard. It really, really is a neat thing, and this is, looks wonderful. So Marcia invites you to come forward and receive your beautification award. Next up, we have Gabe Beck at 401 South McLean Street in Bloomington. You can see, this is a corner home. It's a great corner lot, really gives a lot of space to do some wonderful things in the yard. There are some lovely bushes planted along the side, as well as some nice rock landscaping there along the edges of the home. Something that struck out, struck the committee members was the wonderful ornate paint and wood sculpting there along the top sides of the porch, really adds wonderfully to the home in general. When we look for beautification awards, we just don't look at the plantings that are out front. We look at the overall appearance of the home, and that's one of the things that stood out to us on this one. Again, the front door painted crimson there with the green and crimson striping on the steps, really just helped set this home apart in the neighborhood. And there's a nice kind of pullback view looking at the home there on the corner. So Gabe, please come forward and receive your award for a job well done. Next, we have Fred and Linda Kukuk at 610 West Emerson Street in Bloomington. I'm sorry, thank you, East Emerson Street, excuse me. You can see, it's a lovely, lovely white home with some great shrubbery and flowers there out front, great flower pots lead up along the side of each one of the steps there, lovely garden off to the side there, full of lots of beautiful, beautiful flowers and plantings. We loved the sunflowers on this particular property, just beautiful, and really showcased so well how lovely this home is in the neighborhood. And again, just some great, some great landscaping and shrubbery all around the front of the house. So Linda, Fred, if you would come forward and accept your beautification award. Next is Janice Hardwick. Janice wanted us to also recognize her husband Delmar, who passed away earlier this year, but was a constant partner in maintaining of their property at 1005 West Front Street. You can see this home, lovely blue awning and the blue accents that are around it on the front of the home there, as well as some great plantings along the, along the front walk, just some great flowers in the birdbath out front, as well as some nice shrubbery around the front of the house. Really just sets it off well with that picket fence around the front of the home, just lovely. We were so pleased to offer this home an award, especially when you see the beautiful flowers there along the side of the white picket fence. So we're very excited to be able to offer this award this evening to Janice, and here to accept it with her is her grandson, Angel Muniz. So Janice and Angel, if you would come forward, please. Next, we have Ron and Mary Anderson, who are at 1311 West Seminary Avenue. You can see, it would be hard to miss this property driving by with the beautiful flowers they have all along the fence and the front of the home. Lots of, lots of wonderful flowers planted, not just along the front fence there, but also in the bushes up by the porch and on the walkway leading up to the front of the home. And again, the And again, the landscaping there with the flowers and the lovely shrubbery continues there along the, along the side of the home. And doesn't that American flag just look great accented there in the middle of that well-manicured lawn? So, Ron and Mary, I don't know if you're here this evening, but if you are, we'd love you to come forward and accept this award. Next, we have the home of Linda Kraus at thirteen twenty North Fell Avenue in Bloomington. Linda's home is really, really super. It's got some great stone accents along the front and along the drive, with some wonderful, wonderful shrubs there on either side of the walk heading up. See the great, great plantings there and flowers on really all sides of her home. She's really done a terrific job showcasing this property, and it really just lights up the neighborhood. And again, there's the stone wall with the beautiful flowers going alongside the drive there. Really looks sharp. It was hard not to give this a beautification award this year because of all the hard work she's put into it. So, Linda, please come forward and receive your award. Next is Stacy Steeler at fourteen twenty-one East Olive Street in Bloomington. Stacy's home has that old barn look to it, which we just thought was, was great, and really stood out in the neighborhood as just a lovely style of home. To add to the lovely style of home, she's done a great job with many of the plantings along the, the front of the house, as well as along the side there. Beautiful, too, is all the decor that she has on the porch, from the flower plants to just the look of the steps as you're heading up to the front door. Really looks great and just sets the house off so nice. Really just a terrific job, and we're just so happy to be able to present Stacy a beautification award this evening. Well, now, we turn to our non-residential award winners. Again, we have four non-residential awards to present this year. First up is Kelly's Bakery and Cafe, which is located at one thirteen North Center Street in downtown Bloomington. Kelly's, of course, is a great staple for, for food here in the downtown area, and is also a wonderful place to look at some lovely plantings and flowers along, along the building. They've got these great, these great pots out front with some, just some beautiful prairie grass that is planted in there, really sets it off. Some beautiful accented flowers hang in front of Kelly's there as well, really set it off. And there's some other flower plantings along the, the front of the building there. Really just looks, looks super, and just a great way to help accent downtown and spruce up the downtown area. And we're very happy to present Kelly's Bakery and Cafe with an award. And I think we have Jamie Mathie, who's one of the co-owners with Kelly Mathie. Jamie's gonna come forward and accept the award tonight. Next, we are very, very proud to be able to give an award. I was waiting for that.
You're in the scythe of voting here.
No, no, no. I don't know if any of the folks had a chance to view the beautiful landscaping and the new, the new fountain out front of Bloomington City Hall, but we just couldn't, just couldn't pass up the opportunity to recognize, not necessarily the city, but to recognize some of the members of the parks and rec staff who have done such a super job heading up this project to spruce up the front of City Hall. It's really been quite a transformation from what the front of City Hall used to look like, and it really just sets it off and makes this look like a first-class facility for a first-class city, which it certainly is. So, we'd like to invite Bobby May, Superintendent of Parks for the city of Bloomington, to come forward and accept this award tonight. Our next non-residential award this evening goes to PNC Bank at the corner of two oh two East Washington Street, again, a downtown Bloomington award winner. PNC has just done a super job of doing some great landscaping throughout their parking lot. This certainly is not by any means a concrete desert. They've done a great job with many flowers and shrubs and bushes throughout the entire parking lot, as well as along the sides of the building. Really just spruces up the bank and makes it look just great. It stands out so well there at the corner of, of Washington and, and East Street, and we are just so excited this evening to be able to welcome Glenna Ashley to be able to come forward and accept this award on behalf of PNC Bank. And our final award this evening goes to the Brookridge Homeowners Association. This specifically is for the entrance to their subdivision, which is located right by the corner of Lincoln and Hershey, sort of down just a little bit from, from E three Church there on Lincoln Street. Homeowners Association has just done a stupendous job of doing some great plantings here at the entrance to the subdivision. Great, beautiful, bright, bright pink flowers, and some great, some great plantings also help accent that area. If you can see here, I'm just, when I took this photo, I was by the sign, and all the way down that, that center median, they have taken the time to do some great plantings with shrubbery and flowers all the way down. And this is looking back from the other side. Really just a stupendous job. It's a great entrance to the subdivision. I drive by it every day and just feel, feel so good to be able to see that, see that they're sprucing up the neighborhood and adding to the beautification of the city. So, like to welcome Arnie Lizakowski and Brad Seacord forward on behalf of the Brookridge Homeowners Association to accept this award. For the homeowners association this year, because we wanted them to be able to display it, and we didn't know how it would look to have a plaque hanging on a tree in the middle of their median there, we have actually ordered the Brookridge Homeowners Association a nice decorative stone with an inscription on it, which, which they'll get at a later time, since we didn't wanna put that stress on the mayor's back hauling a rock around the city council chambers. But, yeah. But this concludes our beautification awards, and thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much, Josh. I very much appreciate all your work and leadership as chairman of the committee, and we look forward to even more next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Next, we move to the consent agenda. And are there any items that any member of the council would like to pull for separate consideration or questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Seven G, please.
Seven, which one?
G.
G, seven G. Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item seven G?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. And, let's see, Alderman Fruen?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the consent agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, if we could, everybody vote, please? The consent agenda passes nine to zero. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. Now, moving right along, we'll go to item seven G. And Alderman Lauer, did you have questions or concerns, or? I'll turn it over to you.
I don't know whether Jim Clark could be appropriate, or he would ask a question.
Jim, if you, I think Alderman Lauer has at least one question for you. Please come forward. Thank you.
If you could just give us a, just a real quick overview of the audience, kind of, and understand what we're doing, and why we had a question.
So, the question was, just to give a quick overview, so that everybody can hear, a quick overview of the project, so that, yeah.
Sure.
They've got the background information. Sure, the city council has approved, moving forward, with the development of a bike master plan. As part of that, the city council approved some bike lane along front, and then also along, there's some shores along Prairie, and then also along Front Street to connect the Constitution Trail. What staff is asking for tonight is some consideration of some additional interim steps in this, you know, future recommendation for a bike master plan. Specifically, this is along Jersey Avenue, between the bridge over Sugar Creek, and then also Tuanda Avenue. Now, the reason why we're asking for this now is because of the local motor fuel tax that the council approved at one million dollars. Part of that work is being done on Jersey Avenue, so that, that work is, is going to be happening. We're going to be resurfacing Jersey Avenue. The reason for the timing of asking the council to prove, prove this now is that we know, we're getting closer to the completion of that bike master plan. We know this will be a recommendation in it, because the town of Normal has already put in bike lanes west of Sugar Creek. They're finishing that up now. And then, you have a major employer, country companies, just on the east side of Tuanda. So, you know, part of the, the logic is that now would be the time, whenever you resurface, you can put in, that's when you need to put some sort of center line down. If you do bike lanes, that would need to shift. So, whenever you just put down that hot asphalt, that's when you need to do it. Some key considerations for the council is, there are no city properties that have driveways onto Jersey Avenue. The only properties that access Jersey Avenue are on the north side, that's the town of Normal. And so, we did coordinate and cooperate, as you can see in the packet, with the town of Normal staff. We, you know, worked with them whenever we sent out letters to the residents. And so, because of that, what we'd be looking to do is remove the parking on the south side, where there are no properties fronting it. And then, on the north side, continue to allow parking, because that's where the people have the, the parking right in front of their property. So, if there's questions, go ahead and tell them.
Okay, so, I'm gonna follow up on that. With, it appears to me that this is a requirement by federal law to have this as part of our comprehensive plan under Title twenty-three, bike lanes and walkable routes. Am I correct there?
Specifically, they're trying to deal with a lot of the state routes, and whenever you do some work on state routes, this is part of our overall initiative that the city is doing on local streets. And so, while, you know, the, the council has provided direction for us to move forward that bike master plan, that's why we come back to ask for that additional direction.
Okay, well, as part of that, then, would this be funded partially or in part by MAP twenty-one?
No, that, that would be more for funding of the federal routes throughout Bloomington. So, in this case, Jersey was, is not one of those we'd be looking for that type of funding. The additional, just to keep in mind, though, too, the additional markings, there is not a lot of additional need, other than just some, the pavement striping that goes along with the bike lanes, the linear, the linear lines for the bike lanes, two of them, one on each side, the parking that delineates on the north side, and either way, you have to do a center line. So, you also have some delineation that says, these are bike lanes on the signage. So, it, it is the time, would be the time to do it.
So, I understand the logistics, and if we were gonna do it, I understand that, why we would do it now. I understand all that. I understand the fact that we are really not putting anyone directly out unless they have multiple cars. In certain neighborhoods, we certainly do that. As a matter of fact, there's a lot of consternation at times, even with our snow removal, people not being able to get off the street. I've even got one lady in my immediate neighborhood that's in her late eighties and has a car, and is still legal to drive, and has no driveway. And so, I can see that there's gonna be some issues going down the road here, if this is setting a precedent for what we're gonna do. Especially if we have a route in each direction and a separate, specific part of the pavement for that. And so, I'm kinda following up on one of Alderman Sage's question here. And I've, I've got a little bit of, I guess my biggest issue here is how, how we are currently trying to fund at least this portion of this through the motor fuel tax fund. And, you know, as you know, Jim, I am a, a big proponent of direct allocation of expense. So, we've got a small number of people probably going to be using this area compared to the, the majority of the citizens that would be parking and, and driving their cars along any given route that we might choose throughout the city. So, this is, this is one of the areas that I just, I'm not sure how I would propose to, to fund this. I'm certainly not against bike routes, but on the other hand, I really have an issue, and I can see that there's, there's a cascade of problems down the road with these as we propagate them throughout the city. Is there any thought there?
Well, I think the, the response that would be good for the council to know, as we move forward, we're closing out the bike master plan. We answer the questions, which is, which is always great from the council. You'll see in that, the question and answer with the council, we talked about a timeline. We wanted to give you a heads up on when we'd be bringing this back to you, this bike master plan. In the middle of October, now, we're going to be meeting with the subcommittee again, finalizing some of those recommendations. But the council needs to be aware that staff is very sensitive to parking. I mean, whenever you deal with something like this, you know, you know that a lot of the, the biggest issues with, with bike lanes, shores, anything to do with that, if you impact people's parking, then, then that means a lot to folks. But in this case, that was one of the considerations we thought was a potential win, with no properties fronting on the south side, the elimination of that parking had minimized, I won't say no impact, but it, but it had minimized impact, as opposed to if you had properties that actually had driveways on it.
Jim, if, if, from what I understand, the, the marginal cost of this is just the pain.
Correct.
For a few hundred feet.
Correct.
Mayor, if I could, too, I, I think utilizing motor fuel tax is an ideal way to fund these type of expenditures. And the reason I say that is the Illinois Department of Transportation is committed to so-called complete street planning and development. They see, and they encourage cities, counties, the state even itself, to not just look at roads as a vehicle-only corridor, but a multi-use corridor for vehicles, for bicyclists, et cetera. So, I dot in and of themselves, on a state level, and encouraging local government to utilize MFT to correspond with this complete street vision and strategic plan they have. So, I, I see it's a, it's a great use, a connection between the use of those fundings for this particular bicycle route marking.
Any follow-up before everybody, the other Alderman?
Yeah, I just, you know, I understand the safety side of this, I'm certainly not against safety, but I still have a little consternation with the way that this is being funded, and I question whether the state is more or less mandating us, or maybe even the federal government is mandating us to have these routes. And that's, that's an area that, that I just really think that the locale, the municipality and the citizens thereof should make the decision. I don't feel that we should be forced into things, forced into an expense. What is this gonna cost us a linear mile?
If I could, really quick, it's important to note, nobody's being forced into this tonight. If the council should vote this down, there's nothing requiring, it's good to know, that's a good thing to address. Thank you. There's nothing requiring the council to, to approve this tonight. This is something that, by direction before, the council had given, directed to our staff to move forward with the bike master plan. You know, if that, if the, the governance model should change, and that is not supported, these are the kind of things that's good for us to know. So, we're engaged in that right now. But no, currently on local streets, there, there's nothing requiring the, the council to move in this direction.
Okay, and just one, one last thing. So, what exactly is the logic of doing this when we have a parallel bike-only route in Constitution Trail, just a few blocks away? It kind of escapes me. It, it would be much safer to encourage folks to use that area where they're not gonna be exposed to automobiles at all, and vice versa.
And this is one of the major, this is a good, good point to hit on. This is one of the major impacts of this bike master plan. It's not just for recreation. It, I'll say that again, it's not just for recreation. The Constitution Trail is a wonderful amenity in the community. It's, it's a great, kind of, if you picture a human body, it's a great skeleton, it gets a, a lot of people to a lot of places. But if we really want multimodal improvement, if the council is still wanting to go in that direction, these are the kind of corridors that are very important, because this is also serves as a transportation. People who work at country companies can go down the Constitution Trail, can go on this bike route, get to work. It allows people to get to a park in the town of Normal, yes, but it still is a, a community, a twin-city amenity in this community. So, those are the kind of, the justification and the reason for, for these.
Okay. Alderman Painter?
Thank you. This is in my ward, and I respectfully disagree, Kevin, because where they are planning on having the parking is where the houses are. On the other side of the road, there is no parking anyway. I think it's a really good idea, because otherwise, it will just stop on that little section that's Bloomington, and that just won't look right, and it won't be useful for the bike riders. I don't see any downside to this whatsoever. I think it's a really good idea.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have a couple of comments. And I guess no questions, but, but thank you, Jim, for, for your statements. So, first of all, you know, I've begun riding my bike more frequently, as many of you are aware, for better or for worse. And, you know, I, before, you know, some folks, yeah, I was a runner on a rollerblader, and I never really experienced some of the, the issues that bike riders had to face in the community, until I actually did it myself. And, you know, And, you know, it is really unsafe out there on many of the roads. And it's not just a, a matter of, you know, staying on the right side of the road. I've had people literally drive off the road yelling at me for riding a bike. I have had people throw things at me. These are not atypical stories.
There's the constituents who are mad at you.
You know, who knows? Who knows? Yeah, they knew who I was, exactly. There's that joker with no pedal. So, you know, when, when it comes to these sorts of things, I would, I think the, the future of our community is in multimodal transportation. You know, we talk about expanding, you know, our public transit service. We wanna get more ridership. That's one thing that, that, those buses weigh more and put more wear and tear on the roads. We talk about cars and parking and that's certainly important, but I don't think the way of the future is going to be cars and automobiles. You know, the couple of times I've had to work with Jim on some parking issues, you know, we definitely take into concern some of the parking issues and where people are, what do the residents need in those older neighborhoods. And being the Alderman, representing an older neighborhood, we do have people who don't have driveways and do need to park in the street. And in many cases, we can't make everybody happy, but we do often come to a resolution. So, you know, if I had my way and, 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 you know, I'm just one Alderman, I would love to see more bike lanes throughout the community. I think if we ever do any kind of work anywhere, we should be allowing for space for bikes. Whenever we go to these conferences or we, we, I, I visit other communities in, in the country, you know, LA, Phoenix come to mind, DC, they have bike lanes. They want to encourage people to do that. It actually is a, a better way of getting people around more effective. You know, I ride my bike to work every day. It's not just for recreational uses. And it's been, you know, there's been some unsafe moments. I think it's a small investment that we can make to, to put long-term safety of our residents. And I think it's the future and we need to do everything that we can to make that happen. As for the funding, you know, I've been a, a pretty vocal, you know, I, I loathe the motor fuel tax for a lot of reasons. I think it's an unfair mechanism that doesn't necessarily fund the things that we wanted to in the way that we needed to. And eventually it's gonna be skyrocketing and, and as we continue to hear out of Congress. But it's something that we have right now, it's one tool. But I think that there is definitely a community investment that goes into this and I, I don't think it's a small minority of people. I think there's a growing number of people. You know, I was riding my bike on the trail this weekend a couple different times and it was packed with people on their bikes. And, you know, that's one way of, of getting people from point A to point B, but the trail is limited access. You know, when I tried to cross Veterans Parkway that's, uh, uh, south of Washington, forget it. I mean, it's not, it's just not safe. And, and we need to be putting, you know, to me, public safety is number one and this is one way we can do it at, at the cost of a little bit of paint. You know, having ridden down Prairie and on Front Street with the, the charros, it's been a lot safer and people know where I am and I know where they are and I, I'd rather be comfortable than not and I think residents would agree. So, my thoughts.
Thanks. Just as a, uh, we'll only take about 30 seconds, but just to reiterate, whenever we're at the International City Management Association, the National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors, and in international, this is what's happening throughout most of the rest of the world. It's not just the future of Bloomington, it's the future of urban centers throughout the world. And, and regardless of contrary thoughts, that's happening. Go ahead, Alderman, and then Schmidt.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. I think Kevin does raise some good questions and one of them that caught my attention was the fact that we're not duplicating parallel routes, Constitution Trail. But before I get too excited about that, let me back up because if you follow Constitution Trail, I don't know what you call it, but there is a pathway off the trail to the corner of Hershey and GE Road. So people have access to the country building there at that corner. But then you go further west and you go under Veterans, there's no pathway up from Veterans off that trail and there's no pathway up off the trail at Tuanda Avenue. So anybody getting off of Tuana or Veterans has to, you know, cut through the, the Midas Muffler, whatever's on that corner. But with that said, I, you know, some good points there. With that said, when I was driving down Jersey the other day, I was driving east off of Linden and I wasn't sure I really warmed up to the design of it, but as I followed the markings down and followed the parking, it did, did seem to make sense. And I, I know country's a larger employer and Advocate Bromin is, so as we kinda step into this bicycle lanes on the roads, I think it seems like it's a good test case for us. And it seems to me to be acceptable. But I, I do wanna show a lot of caution when we do these. There is a safety factor and a parallel to Constitution Trail. I know David's heard from me many times with regard to that safe pathway up from the trail. And we gotta be very cautious of that, so, thank you.
And Alderman Schmidt?
I'm not going to repeat what other people have said. I'm very supportive of this, so I'd just like to make a motion that we approve this as presented to us.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Namiloambe is second, okay. Will everybody go ahead and vote, a yes vote?
I, of course, I had a comment.
There may be more.
I, I had a comment.
Oh, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did.
All right, okay, before we vote, go ahead.
I think maybe somebody else might have too, but I just put my light on late, so you probably didn't, you probably didn't know. But I just wanted to weigh in a little bit here on, on bicycles, which we're seeing the real advent of bicycles in cities. And, I mean, no question, it's, it's everywhere. I just wanted to make a comment as a registered nurse ER and occupational, which I still do very part-time and some in the city of Chicago. And we all know bicycles are everywhere. They're on, I mean, the bike lanes on Dearborn Clark, all over the, the, the loop are unbelievable. But here's what we don't know. And in Chicago, the conversation is definitely taking this turn. We don't know about the morbidity and even the mortality involved. And I assure you that I have seen, I have seen it in the city of Chicago. A lot of tragedies are occurring and this isn't anti-bike. This is just, this is just a reality that we're not, we're not talking about. Mortality is, is definitely occurring and it's very tragic when it does because car versus bike, it's, it's not a good scenario. Also the car door injuries of people opening their car doors, I'm seeing it all the time when I work up there. So what we're, what they're talking about in the big cities is licensing, they're talking about fees, they're talking about registering, and they're talking about data, real data that we can actually see so we understand what the morbidity and mortality is because we're not talking about that and I think we should. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, we have eight to one and Madam Clerk, would you announce the nays?
The nay vote is Alderman Lauer.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move right along from our consent agenda to our regular agenda and, oh, excuse me, before the regular agenda, we have a public hearing. Item 8A is public hearing regarding the removal of the barrier, the road barrier on West Jefferson Street at Allen Street. And Mr. Jurgens, I guess at this point I would just ask, right, that I would, who would like to speak for or against this at this point? This is the proposal. We've had many different meetings with people in the community and so at this point, we're having a, a public hearing. Is there, can I have a show of hands of people who'd like to speak to this item? Okay, oh, yes, right, okay. One person? Okay, come on, come forward and then if you'll, I don't know if there's a sign-in, is there? We'll, we'll get your contact information. I think we've got it.
Good evening. My name is Richard Heiser. I live at 810 West Jefferson Street in Bloomington and I'd like to, to rise to, to support the proposal to open the, that intersection to through traffic with a couple of caveats. One would be to consider, and I think this might, if it's possible, and I've taken a look at that intersection, that, that barrier that has been constructed, that if we pinch the opening in to a, to about 22 feet, we might be able to leave in the, the gutter on the south side of Jefferson and Allen. And we could eliminate the need to move the manhole that is where you were collecting that runoff on the north side of Jefferson Street. Both of those are, are east of Allen. That, that would still allow us, I think, more than ample room for emergency vehicles, snow removal, trash collection, street cleaning, things of that sort. I think an, an additional advantage to that possible proposal would be to slow people turning from Allen on to Jefferson headed east at that intersection because I do think it's important that traffic flowed on Jefferson continuously as opposed to having traffic on the east side of, of Allen coming into Allen. And then I think it's going to be confusing to visiting drivers and I think we're likely to have people who would make the stop but then continue on through. And I, you know, I, I've just, we, we have Monroe going in one direction headed west and Jefferson headed east and I think if we could continue to have that, that would be good. Now, we do have one problem, one, at Safe Harbor, at the Salvation Army, there, when they constructed the loading docks, they constructed them to face west. And so when the semis have to come in to offload their, their merchandise or their supplies, they would have to back against the traffic flow. Their, their nose would be headed, you know, into the traffic. They would still be out, they would still allow for, for cars to pass. And I don't think this, I've never counted the number of trucks, but I don't imagine it's more than a few times a month. And so I, I don't see it as, as a deal breaker. I just think it's a consideration and maybe a special arrangement might be made with the, the staff there at the, at the Safe Harbor. But I think it would help to, to clean things up in terms of the, the trash collection and, and we have to be careful with, you know, children who would, who are maybe are accustomed to walking across that median, that, that walkway, you know, where that barrier has been constructed all these years, if they're going to Friendship Park. But I think that's also maybe one of the roles that parents can play and then hopefully drivers will be sensitive. And that's where pinching that in a little bit might be a, you know, to slow the traffic down. I know this is a difficult, this is a, one of those issues in, in my neighborhood that is very emotional, as you can imagine. And I know that there are people of goodwill on both sides. And so I just, you know, think that we have heard also in these citizens' meetings with the, with the staff, that the police and the first responders, it's going to make, you know, their options, you know, easier to, to reach, their, you know, their task easier to carry out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiser, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, um, yes, if you, we have, can certainly open up to questions.
I'm sorry, Rick, I, I just wanna make sure that I understand what you said. You're, you're talking about opening it up but making it
narrower.
A sort of a diet in there, so to speak.
Yes, yes.
And then still continuing, not two-way, but one-way going east.
Yes, I would, I would propose that we continue to just go east all the way, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And I don't know anything about the construction of some, you know, what's underneath there, but just in looking at it, if we could eliminate that, it would save, I think several thousand dollars to not have to reroute those.
Thank you. And I believe, Dennis, are you motioning to somebody else who would like to speak or do you want to speak?
Yeah.
Would you?
Vicky Smith.
Vicky Smith?
Yeah.
Would you like to come forward?
Not really, but.
I think, I think Dennis was, was volunteering you to come forward.
I've just been volunteering.
We really rarely bite, so.
Okay, my name is Vicky Smith. I live at 712 West Jefferson. So I'm like dead center of the block that is blocked off. I think that as a financial responsible attitude towards things, there are cheaper ways to look at that as to completely opening the street at, oh, excuse me, opening the street up. I think if the garbage trucks are concerned, we could put up no parking signs. I believe that police still have full access to the area because they can come from the north, southeast, east and west directions. There are streets on the east side of town that if they go in there, they're trapped. They can't get out any other way. There's one way in, one way out. They at least have access from all four directions in our area. And I don't think that opening the street up is going to solve the issues within the area. It's well-known that not too long ago, just a couple of blocks down in the 900 block, there was very large gathering and people getting stabbed, bricks thrown through windows. It's not that the street's opened or closed, it's the people that are in the area. And I don't think opening the area and buying more traffic in is going to solve that.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, appreciate that, thanks. Okay, anyone else?
I will speak.
Well, you were volunteering others, so I
I agree, because we have been divided in our neighborhood association for quite some time, been to all the
If you just say who you are for the record.
Oh, Dennis Arnold, 504 North Lee, Bloomington.
Thank you, Dennis.
And as president of the Neighborhood Association, Gridley Allen Pirkett Old Town, that we have discussed this many times in our meetings, both with Alderman and without. And we've been, and I've attended all the city meetings and what we've found is that the, the residents who live in the immediate 700 block are, is where you find the majority of opponents of opening this street. And other than that, the rest of the neighbors, if they want, if the city is going to open the street, the majority opinion is that the street remain one-way east. And that was all I had to say.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Dennis. And I will ask a very last call for others who might want to speak. Thank you very much.
Can you tell us what's next?
So if we could review maybe Mr. Jurgens or Mr. Hales of what's next then, what our next steps would be?
The next step is to bring to the council at the next meeting a resolution that would allow the council to take action. It would be my intent that that resolution be supporting the staff's recommendation. The council could then vote on that, up or down. But unfortunately tonight, we do not have action to have the council make a decision. But, but that's kind of what we've planned. In the next meeting, the council would be voting on this matter, one way or another.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. And then we will move along to our regular agenda and we have two items in our regular agenda, each of which are budgeted for 10 minutes. And we'll see. Item 9A is the comprehensive master plan update and our presentation by our distinguished McLean County Regional Planning Commission Executive Director, Bazoo.
Thank you.
I think I've already used up my one minute, so I'll try to squeeze this in nine minutes. So as you know, yes.
There we go.
We started our outreach process for our comprehensive plan, July 1st. All right. And so far, we have had really good luck with reaching out to a broad community. And I will talk about all the venues we have been at and a number of people reached, but this is what we have heard so far. The words in green here are responses to our first question on the survey, which asks community members to talk about what they value in Bloomington. And the words here in blue is we asked the second question where we want them to list one improvement suggestion to make it a better community. I'll start with the words in green. As you know, in a word cloud, the bigger the word is, that is how many times it has repeated in, by comparison. Any words that did not repeat more than 20 times so far have not been made into this cloud yet. So as you can see, for the most part, I can almost guarantee you for every third survey that we receive, people love the fact that Bloomington has this small-town feel with big city amenities. They love the kinship that's offered here. They really love the family friendliness of the community. They feel very safe here. They feel like people care about each other, but they also feel like this has But they also feel like this has all the big city amenities, like high-paying jobs, good access to health care, regional shopping experience, and great education and school And the next biggest one that keeps coming up is parks and trails. People love the amount of recreational opportunities they have here. Constitution Trail, we hear about it all the time. People really love the fact that it really connects and it acts like somebody, I really like this analogy where they said, right now it really connects every part of town to some degree, but I want to see that as a nervous system connecting every single part of City of Bloomington. So, good education system. People really like both our K-12 schools as well as the universities here. Safe community. People feel very safe in Bloomington. And they, there are several comments on how people feel like they can let their kids out and let them play in the neighborhood and don't have to worry about that. At the same token, safety is also just as big on the blue words. If you look right at the top of where the safe community is in green, we hear a lot of people saying they don't feel as safe here in Bloomington. That's something that at end of this outreach, October 31st, we really want to see where we are getting these comments from. If there is a significance by a particular age group or by a particular geographic concentration or where do people feel safe and where do people feel unsafe? Is there a perception issue? So this is something that we will get really detailed and present back to this council. So one other value word that keeps coming up quite a bit is people love the arts, culture and history here in this community. One of the biggest suggestions that we keep receiving is we need to preserve our cultural roots as we grow and our culture and historical roots as we grow. Improvement suggestions. By far, if we have to award a trophy to one improvement word that keeps coming up all the time, that is infrastructure investment. Pretty much, that really does come up quite a bit. And the interesting thing is when we look at it, it is the infrastructure investment that people can see. That's streets, potholes. That comes up a lot more than infrastructure that they cannot see, like the sewers and storm waters and things like that. The next biggest improvement word is revitalize downtown. They really want downtown revitalized. And something that we need to take a careful look at is we hear mixed messages when they say revitalize downtown. The single message is they really want a vibrant downtown. And people have different opinions on what that means. And that's something that we will be presenting to the council at a later date. Along with revitalize downtown, we hear a lot about revitalizing existing neighborhoods. People feel like the surrounding neighborhoods need to be looked at along with downtown and we need to grow denser, is what we hear all the time, keeping the small footprint of Bloomington like it is today, is what people refer to when they talk about revitalizing existing downtown, sorry, existing neighborhoods. Green transportation options. This includes when people say, I want to see more of walkability, bikeability, or transit options. All of these three are combined into green transportation options. Among those three, definitely bike lanes keeps coming up a lot. Anything else that you see on there that you'd like a little bit more explanation on? Again, at end of the outreach, the council will receive a very detailed report on what we have been hearing and the intensity of it as part of our vision and values document. So far, who responded? Oh, sorry, did you have a question? Yes.
I did.
Oh, on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it asked about the last slide. So I'm noticing that many of these are contradicting ideas, is, and very, you know, opposite polar ends of the spectrum. Is there going to be some breakdown? Because I imagine that like arts, culture and history may mean one thing to me but might mean something to somebody else. Is that report that you've outlined going to detail kind of the methodology on how you took some of those responses and then codified it into that category?
Absolutely, yes. So what we do is every week, we take the responses and we kind of give them a tag. As you know, none of the questions are multiple choice. These are all open-ended questions. So we are trying to do our best to come up with a meaningful way to present this information. In our end report, what we want to do is definitely there is a debate based on what we are seeing. We will present the majority opinion as well as if there was a debate within the opinions, we will bring that to your attention.
Awesome. Thank you.
Go ahead, continue.
Awesome. So this is who responded to our surveys so far, about 1,600 people. If you look at your packet that I submitted, I believe, two and a half weeks ago, the number has really gone up quite a bit. Part of it is because we have been out and about in the community starting July 1, and it took about two months to really get the word out. And now we are starting to see an average of anywhere between 150 to 250. There was a week or two where we did receive 350 surveys a week. So it has picked up quite a bit. And who responded so far? About 62% women and 38% men. National statistics, for some reason, show that women respond to surveys more than men. From owner and renters information, this is something that we are slightly disappointed that we are not able to reach as many renters. Bloomington has about 38% rental units and 62% ownership units. So we are trying very hard to reach out to apartment complexes to see how we can reach out to more renters. Age groups, there is a pretty even distribution, except for the younger age group. We want to reach more to the younger age group. We have made quite a bit of progress in the last two to three weeks, but we want to definitely reach out to more of them. Income-wise, we have reached out, I think this is pretty representative of Bloomington. From a ward perspective, this is what it's looking like at this time. From every ward, we've received at least 100 surveys, if not more. Definitely ward number four, we've received a lot. The other classification here is when people do not submit their ward information or they give us information that we cannot pinpoint to a particular ward. For example, if they say East Washington Street, that really does go a stretch. Or if they point out that they live in Normal or one of the other surrounding communities. As when we first presented the scope of project here, we really wanted to reach out to about 7,600 people. That's about 10% of Bloomington. So far, we've reached out to about 5,000 people. And why is there a disconnect between survey responses and number of people reached? Sometimes we tap on people's shoulders many times and still they may choose to not respond to a survey. This here is a breakdown of activities that were, activities in outreach media. As it relates to our outreach activities, we've conducted many activities from neighborhood meetings to attending events, to talking to students in classrooms and things like that. And we've reached out to about 2,000-plus people through that. We have over 130 people who are working on various working groups and at least spending about a month, one hour per month. And if you look at that, that's a lot of hours of community members working on this project. And we would not have been able to reach to that many people if it wasn't for all the help and assistance of project partners. And it would be, I would fall short if I didn't say that I got great deal of help from the city council members as well as city staff. I'd hate to name a department because every single department was so enthusiastically helping us with this project. So we really appreciate your support and promoting this process, which is very critical for the city. Any questions?
Thank you. And I would like to encourage the continued support of our council in helping you as you move forward. Further questions, comments on this? Yes, Alderman, Wambue, and Black.
All right.
Hey Vasu, thank you for doing a very nice job with this. Are you, in terms of seeking more responses, are you reaching out directly to the employers, for example? I would say for, let's say, ISU and Brobman and Country, who we know have their employees living in Bloomington, but, you know, using their channels, you might be able to get more responses that way.
We have tried to reach out to State Farm and Country Financial. With State Farm, there were several groups within State Farm, like the government affairs groups and stuff, who are promoting this process. But system-wide, we did not have much luck getting this information through system-wide yet. We have not reached out to ISU to do this system-wide. Having said that, when people who actually live in Normal but work in Bloomington, when they respond to the surveys, we welcome that because, you know, obviously they're experiencing the community. But we haven't actively seeked out the companies in Normal.
Okay. Let's see, Alderman, Black, oh, did you have a follow-up?
No, and I was just going to say, you know, I understand there could be some challenges, you know, doing that, but I was just curious if, you know, you've asked.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Black, and Lauer, and then we're done.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the presentation. I like getting PowerPoints like this and having the explanation as opposed to just a long, drawn-out report. So this is good, especially the work that goes into the formatting and the design of these shapes. I mean, it's really a good way of visualizing some of this data. But along those lines, if you go back to the slide with the ward, one that I'm going to go ahead and post again, the link to the survey again, I don't like when Ward 7 is in last place, although it looks like Ward 3 is.
That was the intent of presenting.
We're coming for you. But I'm curious about the other category and to what extent we're taking that. So like, are they weighted? Like if I say I live in Normal but work in Bloomington, is my survey considered or let's say that I live in like Chinoa or something? Is that thrown out?
No, all the surveys are considered, but we just wanted to look at geography within Bloomington to make sure that we have voices from around Bloomington equally represented in here. So those surveys are not thrown out. One, because several of those surveys could very well be in Bloomington that they chose not to give us the information.
Okay. So like if I live in Chinoa or wherever, that's not Bloomington or Normal, and I don't even mention that I work in Bloomington or to some extent Normal, why should that opinion matter?
I will give you this one example. This person said, I was born and raised in Bloomington and I lived there until such-and-such a time. I just moved out. And, but I have, I know what I value in Bloomington and I know why I moved out and I would like to see these improvements, which we definitely think is a great input as we are trying to make our community a better place.
That makes sense to me. I just was worried that we're going to get an influx of people who don't live in the community or who have left that are, you know, have an axe to grind and suddenly we have bad data, so.
We can figure that out.
Boy, and you'd be curious to kind of see some of the information, people who don't live in Bloomington and what their responses are compared to people who do live in Bloomington about what, you know, I get that, but I'm just curious about the rationale, so thank you.
Absolutely. We can pull out some of the information of what 17-year-old youngers said. They wanted all the speed bumps gone.
Okay. I wondered why. Last but not least, Alderman, Lauer.
Right, and I just have to rib the millennial over there. There are a lot of folks that live in Chinoa and love that place and it's a great place to be.
And they love Bloomington too.
Yeah, I love Chinoa. And they're certainly welcome down on South Hill anytime. Anyhow, to get a little bit more specific, you've had, and this represents how many actual surveys?
This represents about 1,580 actual surveys.
1,580, and of those, you can identify how many that actually live in Bloomington?
I want to say, based on this information, about 400 looks like they're from, they either didn't provide the information, provided, didn't provide sufficient information to pinpoint to a ward.
Okay, so we know, you know, factually, that there's roughly 1,100 respondents out of 76,000 people. So it's a very small percentage, really, overall. And so, yes, I understand mathematically, Mayor, you've underlined that that data set would be representative. It's hard for me to believe, though. And it's hard for the citizens to understand that. And so, you know, I would encourage anyone to get on and respond, certainly, if we're going to have our opinion heard. I question the effectiveness if they don't. So, thanks.
Just to clarify, not that it would, it could. It depends, and I think what you're talking, what you're doing is an interesting outreach, but it's not a random sample. So, you know, if we really did an 1,100, actually, you can get a representative sample of opinion in China, a billion and a half people with 1,100, if it's done properly. But not that yours isn't proper, you're trying to do extra outreach to people, and so you're doing, trying to do something more than a simple random sample in this situation.
Absolutely, and actually we're collecting other demographic information as well. But I would like to mention something that this is by far the biggest outreach as it relates to comprehensive planning that has ever happened. In the past, we've had probably about 100 or 150 people participate in this process. And if you look at all the comprehensive planning processes throughout Illinois, this definitely is by far the biggest response. And I will tell you, though, that we have received a lot of suggestions to make it not so open-ended and so make it multiple choice so people can pick. Our survey responses would have been twice as many or probably even more. But what we have gathered now is quality information on what people really value here and what they would really like to see improved.
Oh, Alderman, no, the city manager.
I'd just like to ask Vasu to comment on one other issue, and that is, I know in some of our monthly meetings, we've talked about making sure that we invite the council to participate, be part of the process. Could you just, for the council's benefit, reiterate, even if they just want to go online and stay abreast, or if you have any other ideas as how the council can be involved throughout the process? Would you like to offer any of those suggestions or recommendations to them? And mention, too, the working groups and where the public and the council can go to find out the dates, times and places of where those working groups are meeting.
Absolutely. So first of all, I would again like to acknowledge that the council, several council members are very actively involved. I know several events where Alderman Schmidt has facilitated the discussions and I, you know, I know that has happened in a lot of wards and we received a lot of support from Alderman. Something else that is also happening is about 15 to 17 working groups per month. And we have all the meeting dates and times posted on our website and a public can attend any of the working groups based on their interest. This information is posted through end of the year and our working groups meet until end of November. December, we are taking off and we'll start meeting again in January. So we definitely would like members of the public and council to attend those meetings if they can. So far, we are at 1,600. Like I said, we are averaging about 100 to 150 surveys. The more we get, the better information we can have. So if you can encourage your constituents in any other way, please do so to fill the survey out. Employers-based outreach, if you have, if there is any leverage that I can use from the council, I would be happy to take that as well.
Well, if you need help at Illinois Wesleyan, you kind of have a mayor and alderwoman who might be willing to help there.
Yes, Wesleyan has been very engaged in the process, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Glad to hear that. That's right. Bring it on Bloomington. Thank you.
Bring it on Bloomington. And the website is bringitonthemountain.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Excellent job. Thank you. If we can move on then to item 9B, the enterprise zone application update. And we're going to have Mr. Kaler come forward.
Good evening. Mayor, while Frank's coming up, let me just make a few comments. And again, our objective tonight is to just give the council kind of an interim update on the new enterprise zone application that is being coordinated by the Economic Development Commission of the Bloomington-Normal area. We do have Ken Springer here tonight, Vice President of that organization, who is very involved in helping both the city, the town and the county in preparing this new application. I think it is important to point out, we do have a very significant deadline in that these three governmental entities with the assistance of the EDC have to submit an application by the end of this year in order to be considered for the first round of applications that are going to be acted upon by the so-called Enterprise Zone Board. Board. Um, this, uh, tonight, we just wanted to give you kind of a high-level, uh, understanding of, of what is, uh, currently being done, and primarily to share with you, too, uh, what staff has proposed to the EDC as far as what would be the recommended geographic areas to be included, uh, within the city of Bloomington. Uh, but we all gotta keep in mind, even though this application, you know, can include, uh, new areas, revised areas, changes, but if the, ultimately, the application is approved, as you have seen in the past, the zone could always be amended to add new specific projects. So that's the one thing we especially wanted to review with the council tonight, uh, to show what staff has recommended to the EDC be included. Uh, sometime in October, the council will be asked to make a final decision on this application, including these areas. And we just wanted to make sure that we gave you a preliminary update, showing you what we've been proposing, so that you had a chance to at least, uh, respond to staff and see if you're feeling comfortable with the direction and all the information we're providing to the EDC. With that, let me turn to Frank Kaler, our interim Economic Development Coordinator, for some additional information on this project.
Thank you, City Manager Hales, Mayor and Council. Welcome, Alderman, Hamon to, to the council. Go back to 1983, enterprise zones were created, unemployment was about 13%, areas of the state, Rockford, Joliet, Cankey, you had unemployment about 29%, 25 and higher. The need for investment, for development within those areas of the state. We fast forward, un- the unemployment rate certainly is down, but there's still a need to incent development, uh, particularly within Illinois, particularly within the Bloomington-Normal area. Enterprise Zone's one of those few tools that the state gives municipalities that can actually, uh, help assist in that development process. What's unique about this go-around is it's not a recertification, but it's a brand-new application, a brand-new zone. We have an opportunity to create the boundaries. Um, in the past, when we've added property, we almost had to have a company in hand, they need 10 acres, they employ 200 people, they're gonna invest $20 million, and that then gets submitted to the state. We don't have that significant of a task, but we still have to show that there is, in fact, a need for an enterprise zone within the area. So what we're looking at, the, the blue is what you see are the existing areas, um, the, the west side, the far west side, uh, of town, the, um, downtown Bloomington, which was added. Uh, we're, we're looking to expand on the downtown, to incent development on the west side, um, as it goes west on Market Street and then along the railroad corridor in that area. Certainly to the, uh, to the north of Locust Streets and property, you know, where the electoral properties are, there's some opportunities for reinvestment redevelopment in that area. Um, not shown necessarily on this map, but, uh, down by, um, Main Street and Interstate 74, some of that additional acreage down there, uh, some greenfield development where some larger opportunities might exist. Uh, certainly adding property further to the west on the south side of Market, over there by, by the Walmart, again, there's property which is service, utilities, uh, and which could be a good home for those targeted industries that we're looking to bring within the area. Now, Ken Springer can talk about the success the enterprise zone has had in the area and continue, will continue to have, uh, if we're successful in getting our application, uh, put forth. So this is what we're working with the EDC and the properties we're looking to bring in. The red area, it was my fault looking at Bloomington at 30,000 feet, empty land, great place to develop, the cemetery. So, we work with the EDC to get that acreage coming out of there, but other than that, I, I think we got a pretty good map, so.
If you could just clarify for the, the council, remind us and the, the, the public, uh, the, the primary benefit then for enterprise zones, if people are going to come in and, or firms come in and invest in the area, they don't, they get a break on...
The, the, the state benefits at this point in time, there is a, um, the qualified businesses that come in, there is a waiver of the, uh, sales tax from materials purchased in Illinois and using the construction, there is investment tax credits made available to those companies. For larger companies, there is a, uh, utility tax exemption, which can be beneficial to that. At the present, there are no local incentives in that, it's all at the state level, uh, as we're putting together our packet. We'll be coming back to you with some thoughts on that as well.
Great. Uh, questions, comments from the council? All the woman's turns.
How, how does one gauge the success of the enterprise zone at the end of it?
I would defer to Ken, if you wanna talk about the, the jobs created, the investments. Brian?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Uh, the question of how successful has enterprise, it's been our most successful economic development tool since, uh, the EDC has begun, uh, was reconstituted back in 2003. Numbers-wise, we have used enterprise zone on about three-quarters of all the projects that we've done over the past nine years, so, uh, without a doubt, it's our most often-used tool.
But my question is a rather specific one, I appreciate that, about what, what numbers, what actual parameters, what, you know, are used to, I mean, number of jobs, in, in, the increase in the number of jobs, the increase in the EAV, I mean, what?
Absolutely, I mean, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but, uh, let's see, let's see, so at least 750 jobs, at least 75 million, that would be between the period of 2006 and 2011. Since then, probably another 200, so it's, it's definitely in the hundreds of jobs and in the millions of capital investment that is...
And is that community-wide? When you look at statistics, community-wide?
That's Bloomington-Normal, McLean County, correct.
Okay, so it's not specifically looking at the enterprise zone, for instance, the business that came in and how many jobs that business generated?
No, 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 those numbers are for projects that specifically located in the zone, that is not, not net job creation. That is, what I'm talking about are individual projects that the EDC has either certified in the enterprise zone, or we have amended the boundaries, uh, such as we recently did for FedEx. Those are only projects that we have directly worked on.
Okay, and is it possible to, you know, see those, or for the public to get those numbers?
We have, yeah, we have score sheets, um, done, yeah, I just didn't bring with me tonight, I apologize.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, if I could, I, it seems to me that the enterprise zones have to report that kinda data. Isn't that also out on a state website, um, especially over the last few years?
Yes, uh, the, uh, the state of Illinois does an annual report, which is, uh, produced every year, which has the net jobs created and the net investment for every enterprise zone in the state, and that's, uh, pretty easily available from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities website.
So maybe Googling DCEO and, and annual enterprise zone, you know, reports, and, and then they could, you will see, not only in total, but for every enterprise zone, what we're reporting and what others are reporting as well.
Correct. And there's, interesting, that the, the state captures more data than what we, we, directly at the EDC can have access to, because at the EDC, as our role as administrators, we really only deal with the building materials tax exemption, uh, which Mr. Kaler already referenced. Uh, those, uh, businesses that are taking advantage of other incentives within the enterprise zone don't have to go through us as local administrators, and so we may not even know, um, the, we may not even know the, the extent of the businesses that are using those other incentives.
Right, did you wanna add anything to that?
Oh, just, the significance of the enterprise zone...
If you could just speak into the microphone, please.
The significance of the enterprise zone, um, it's, fully has to be approved by the state. You know, communities can, uh, develop, uh, tax increment, financing districts, business development districts, and there's over 400 TIP districts throughout the state of Illinois. There are only 99 enterprise zones throughout the state. Uh, the state's very judicious as to who qualifies and who gets approval for an enterprise zone, so it's one of those rare...
Because they're giving their skin in the game. They're giving their skin in the game, tax rebates, yeah. Yeah, good.
Yeah, and, and to, to expand upon that, this is a very competitive application process. Um, there are 47, I'm sorry, 49 zones that are going to be authorized in this first round of application, and you can bet that every city and every county that has its economic development hopes and dreams on the line are going to be putting in for one of these enterprise zones, because the state has been very, very stingy with the creation of these zones over the years. And so, for us, this is, this is almost, uh, a defensive play, because we've had our enterprise zone since 1985, we've used it to the hilt, uh, and, particularly in the past nine years, um, and this is, this is a critical tool in our toolbox. And so for us, uh, to continue to provide economic development services and, and help facilitate the expansion of existing businesses and the recruitment of new businesses, we've gotta have this in our toolbox.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, gonna turn it over for, uh, comments from our city manager?
Well, Mayor, I, I recently had the opportunity to attend the International City County Managers' Association Annual Conference, as well as the Illinois Municipal League Annual Conference, and as an email I shared with you today over the next few weeks, I do wanna share with you some of the important and things that I think would be critical or, or well for the council to be aware of from both of these conferences, as well as what are some of the administrative initiatives that I wanna kinda take from these and, and actually have some very specific next steps. As, uh, just as an example to let you know what you'll be seeing, in the, during the, up in the Chicago IML, I had the opportunity to listen to the, uh, two cities talk about their response to recent tornadoes, one being the Washington, and then there was another one. It was very insightful to listen, uh, to what the city administrators, mayors and others said as to what they wish those communities would have had already prepared in advance of a natural disaster like that. So part of what I'll be sharing with you is what are some of these needs that we have from not just the, the emergency response, but in order to maximize the amount of FEMA-type, uh, recovery funds that could come our way, especially to repair things like public infrastructure, things of that nature. In this day and age, FEMA has some very strict and detailed guidelines, rules, regulations, you know, just dealing with things like debris, debris removal. Uh, there's no doubt that, uh, because of the lack of resources, we have not been able to be as farther along in updating our emergency operations plan, and for events like this, do we have things like debris, debris removal plan? Do we have a financial, uh, uh, recovery plan and financial accounting plan, et cetera, et cetera? These, as well as many other great ideas, is things that, uh, we need to get to sooner or later. Uh, always, it's a function of priority, it's a function of resources, but, uh, I think we can really learn from these, from the terrible tornadoes from last November, and begin at least to put out on our to-do list some things that really these communities are sharing with us, things that we need to get our act together, we need to have some of these policies, procedures, training, everything in place, so that when we do, if, it's not if, but when, you know, one of these events happen, we will be as prepared as anyone, uh, as we've learned from some of these other communities. But I thought that was, uh, great, I'll share more information on that and other information with you in the very near future. So, other than that, uh, have no- nothing else tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, I'll be, especially since we're, uh, running later than we thought, I'll be very brief, just, and to the point on two things. One, we are gonna have, um, actually the second retreat of, uh, my tenure as mayor, on October 10th and 11th, the council retreat, and certainly just wanna invite, uh, people, obviously, this is, uh, open to the public, and it'll be, again, October 10th and 11th. And I also want to, um, thank Mike Kimmerling, uh, not just for filling in as city manager, but you wanted to make sure that the mayor didn't look like a total dork with the glasses that I had last time that were broken, thank you very much. I came in on Wednesday, and they were appropriately gift-wrapped, and I went over and I immediately, he was in the finance department, I went and basically bowed down and, uh, paid him homage, so I'll do that again, Mike, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Uh, and that's all I have at this point. Oh, and I do wanna, uh, thank you, uh, our, uh, Mayor Protem, Karen Schmidt, for, uh, handling the township meeting, uh, was delayed, and thank you.
Where is the retreat?
Uh, that's yet to be decided, I, we're still working on that, and we'll get more information, you know, agendas, things like that, as we're pulling those together, so.
Yeah, I was puzzled there, I thought, okay, is this something else I'm supposed to know, but I forgot? Anybody else, any other, uh, comments from Alderman?
Just wanted to follow up on David's, uh, uh, talk on, on the, uh, the FEMA issue, and, uh, there is a void in most municipalities between, uh, um, 72 and 96 hours, which are critical. Um, most people do not survive, uh, the first 36 hours if they're not prepared. And, um, that requires a lot of volunteerism, and it should require a fair amount of training. Um, one of those aspects is the Boy Scouts, which I, um, am involved with and have been involved with, uh, many years. But we really need to do more to involve our adult cadre as well. And, uh, smaller communities such as Hayworth and Chinoa and Leroy and many others already have a, uh, a group of volunteer individuals in their fire department. Um, certainly, we have some very professional, uh, full-time firemen here that would be called in, but, um, it would probably require with a, with a municipality as large as ours, a fair number of volunteers as well. And so, um, I, I would like, I'm very interested in trying to, trying to, uh, work towards a, a better, a better plan, thanks.
And we can, I'm sure, work with Kurt Hawk from the, with the county as well. Anyone else? Okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, um, second by Alderwoman Hammond, perfect time to do that. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned, thank you.